Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Citrus Heights City Council September 12th meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to note that we did have a very short closed session at 5:30, but we have no reportable action. So please rise and join me in the flag salute.
Aye.
Aye.
The United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And may we have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council, we do have some technical difficulties, so it is being recorded. It will not be live. They're hoping to get that going live at some point during the meeting. But it will be recorded and replayed on Monday, September 16th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. And a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
If a motion is second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation recognizing William Bill Heiser.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Steve Miller to please make this presentation on behalf of the council tonight.
Hey. Twins. I'd like to start off by saying I first met Bill about three and a half years ago at the Cbar C Dog Park. He was there every morning. I didn't know his name back then. I knew his dog's name Grizz. But... Woof! Woof! And Zion.
I heard his name.
This is the first time we've had dogs in this chamber. This is gonna be fun. We really value our volunteers in Citrus Heights. And unfortunately, Bill passed away in May. And I found out by going to the dog park, and he wasn't there. It was like the first day I hadn't seen him there. So I've asked his wife and family to come here tonight. We would like to recognize Bill. And if you'd come forward, I'd like to read the proclamation we have for you. Then you can bring the puppies. Okay. I usually don't read these, but it's pretty short and to the point. "Bill Heiser served the community of Citrus Heights as a devoted volunteer who had a love for dogs. He spent decades volunteering with Pet Owners Organization of Citrus Heights, or Pooch, and was one of the early pioneers in helping to bring Cbar C Dog Park that we all love and enjoy today to Citrus Heights. Bill spent countless hours keeping the Cbar C Dog Park clean. Every morning, he would visit the park to make sure the doggie bag dispensers were full, swept the concrete, hosed down the entry area, and picked up the dog debris—I would say poop—left behind the day before. Bill was loved by all he met and was a dedicated friend to many. He will be missed by all who knew him and loved him. While Bill will be remembered for his passion for NASCAR, racing, and dogs, he will primarily be remembered for his act of kindness and willingness to help the community in any way he could." And I'd just add, without proper recognition, you know, it wasn't until I kind of found out what he was doing that I knew. And Joe, you've kind of picked up the mantle and run with it, and we really appreciate— and Michelle and everybody. And I will add that the inner circle of Pooch is here today. And without further ado, I'd like to present this to you.
You know, and while—
Can you get the dogs in the photo?
While they're getting situated for their picture, I just wanted to add a couple comments. Way back when, long before I was on the city council—I'm the longest-serving council member—I remember when Pooch was first formed, and this dedicated group of people came to the Chamber of Commerce—which is where I was working at the time—and then to the city to get this dog park built. And they worked tirelessly, and they advocated endlessly. And as a result of that, we have a wonderful dog park, which I also frequent with my dog. And it takes a lot to keep that park going, and to keep it clean, and to keep it maintained. And I want to thank you all, and especially the Pooch folks, for your dedication. It's an amenity that our city really enjoys, and not only our city, but people from all over. And I'm thankful that I live like a two-minute drive away from it, so—thank you, Joe.
Pooch up here, take a photo.
Sure. Let's get a Pooch up here. You want to get the council down there, too?
Or stand up here.
Oh, we'll stand up here. We'll be your backdrop.
Let's go down a little further, put the dogs down.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. It's always hard to follow a dog act, so do my best. Oops, wrong glasses.
I know.
Okay. All right. Our next item is comments by council members. We'll start with Councilmember Middleton.
So the highlight of my past week was yesterday. We went to the first annual 9/11 ceremony here in Citrus Heights at the Sylvan Cemetery. And it was a very nice gathering and a chance to remember, because 18 years ago, you know, this happened. But what really struck me about that was the fact that my son came home from school, and he told me about 9/11, and what he had learned, and how it brought our community together, made our nation stronger. We learned about diversity, and he was so happy and proud about that. And he was shocked to know that it was not a movie, that it actually happened. And it really drove home the point that Jim Monet made at the ceremony, which was, we have a whole generation of youth coming up that don't remember, and they don't know about it. And it's important for us to continue to educate them and to let them know what happened so that we can continue to build stronger communities, just like the ones that we model here in Citrus Heights. And my son was also floored when I told him that, you know, I was in high school when that happened. He was like, "Oh, my God, you're old." So that was kind of heartbreaking, but that's my update.
Okay. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Jeanie. Didn't have an RT meeting, but unless you don't own a radio, TV, or do any kind of social media—on Sunday, they rolled out the new and modified bus routes, and began Sunday. And I have to tell you, the free rides are over. They went Sunday through Wednesday. Haven't heard too many big complaints about that, so hopefully everything's gone smooth. And I know service is better, and the connections are better, so I'm hopeful this works and we work out any glitches that come up. This past Monday, I attended the Citrus Heights Chamber Lunch. Jeanie was there. Jeff was there.
I was there on Tuesday, but you might have been there on Monday.
Oh. Tuesday. And our very own Chief Lawrence spoke and gave an update on the police department. Wednesday did do the 9/11 observance with Portia. Also attended the Fellowship Chamber Regional Quarterly Meeting, and they honored our police department and the metro fire department as well there, and Jeanie was with me. Quality of Life Committee, we met, Jeanie and I and staff, and did the initial CDBG grant funding options. And council will be seeing our recommendation, I think, October? When the council meeting's October? I'm seeing a yes from the back. And this afternoon, I attended the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. And the biggest thing to note was that the board decided to hire Will Kempton as the executive director. And I don't know if the name's familiar to everybody, but he used to head up Caltrans, and it's just a temporary assignment, about a year, as we transition to a permanent executive director. And that's for all our sales tax that goes towards roads and transit. And with that, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you. Not too much. Just had the opportunity to attend the grand opening for the Yippies Play Center with Councilmember Middleton. And good time. If you haven't gotten over there, get your kids over there. It's on Antelope and Sunrise, and it is a fun time, and so do that if you can. And then also had an opportunity to attend one of the Coffee with the Cops events up at Borders? No.
Barnes &amp; Noble.
Barnes &amp; Noble. Barnes &amp; Noble. The Starbucks there. Starbucks put it on. And good turnout, lots of cops. I would have liked to have seen more citizens. And so keep your ears open. When you hear about one of those, please attend. They were a lot of fun, and so please get out and do that. And that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Slowey.
Thank you, Jeanie. So I was out of town for a bit, so Jeanie covered me at Secog. I'll let her talk about that. Her and I did meet today with several folks from the city, as well as the school district. And, you know, they actually have some good numbers to report. And what we've pretty much told them is, you know, most people don't know unless you tell your story. So we're encouraging them to get out in the community, use, you know, the city services, come to these meetings, talk about, you know, areas that they've seen improvement in, enrollment, et cetera. So you hopefully, going forward, you're going to see somebody from the school district here more often, talking about the Citrus Heights schools and what's going on. Outside of that, I do have just a couple of things mentioned, of things that are coming up. Some of them are actually after our next council meeting, so hopefully we'll tell you again. But the 21st, which is a week from Saturday, at Sunrise Marketplace, Fall Fest, car show, live music, family stuff, trampolines, mechanical surfboards, bungee jumping, all free for the kids. It doesn't—oh, it's at Sunrise Mall, out in the parking lot, I assume, right out by the farmer's market. The next day, the 22nd Sunday, is our Sunday Fun Day. Doesn't say on here what number it is, but it's like our 20th?
More than that. 23rd. It's the 23rd.
Have we had them since the first year?
Yeah, it's very many.
Okay. So 23rd, Family Sunday Fun Day, great event. Come out. It's at Rush Park. Two other quick ones, and then I'll end. 27th and 28th of September, the Veterans Community Center down on Sylvan is having a yard sale, so feel free to go down and support them. And then this one, I would encourage you to go to if any of you have kids in any Citrus Heights school. But it's—the San Juan Unified School District, Wednesday, November 13th, is putting on what's called Meet Your Citrus Heights Schools. So they're going to have people there from all the different schools, some of the administrators. It's over at our community center. But it's a good time to come out, meet some of the people who your kids are learning from, some of the principals, but more importantly, find out what's going on with the schools in Citrus Heights, where we're sending our children, our future of the city. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. So real quickly, the last meeting we had at the San Tation District was in August. We're not meeting in September. And our most notable item was a report on our South County Ag Program. And this is a recycled water program that we approved and have been working on for a long, long time, many years. And the program is going to deliver up to 50,000 acre feet per year of recycled water to 16,000 acres of agricultural and habitat lands. And that's just the beginning of a long-term approach to be environmentally—be a good environmental stewards, and to use water that belongs to us in our region, instead of shipping it all down south to be enjoyed by Southern California. You get plenty, as it is. So it's a real good project, and so I'm very excited. I wish we could take advantage of this directly in Citrus Heights, but I think overall, we will all benefit from it. And so that was a good report. And so as Jeff said, I did cover for him at the Transportation Committee meeting for Secog. And a large part of it was a discussion about RENA, which is an acronym for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. This is a process that all municipalities go through every eight years. And we are dictated by the state how many affordable housing units we must provide for in our city. And so because we are a very built-out city, and we already have a lot of affordable housing, we had a pretty reasonable number. It was, I think, 400 and something. But some of the cities have thousands. And so—but it's a big increase over the last cycle, which was eight years ago. And so it's just—it's—this will be played out over the next eight years, basically. And I did go to the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting today, and Jeff shows you the flyer from—basically, it's the first fall activity that we have. It's going to be followed by Spooktacular in October, and that's going to be followed by our Howlalouine Parade, also in October. And so the other things that were talked about, our officer or Sergeant Evans gave a report on activities as far as rounding up shopping carts and keeping our city clean. So there was talk about an uptick in efforts to do that, because that is the responsibility, basically, of the owner of the shopping carts. Our city manager gave a report on the activity that the council took in July to create a specific plan for the Sunrise Mall and the progress on that. You'll be hearing more about that as that rolls out over time. And then we also talked again about a major lighting project that the city is going to provide along the corridor of Sunrise Boulevard and Greedback Lane, which will be beautiful with colored lights in the palm tree area. And then another beautification project that the Sunrise Marketplace is taking on, in cooperation with SMD, they are bringing art out to the public by wrapping power transformers. And these are those big, ugly, green boxes that are on streets that have power equipment in them. And so they've actually become very innovative, and they are working with Crocker Art Museum. And so we got an idea, just a sample of some of the artwork. Some of it's classics, like Renoir and Van Gogh, and some of them are local, edgy artists here in the Sacramento area. So those will start being taken—they have a budget for it. They're going to start doing this over the next several months. And so it's going to be a nice addition to the marketplace. They're also replacing their holiday decor this year, so during the Christmas season and the rest of the holiday season, you will see different decorations. And so, all good for the marketplace. And then Jeff reported about our school meeting. So we do this about every two to three months with the school district, with their superintendent and two of their board meetings. And we also reported on the success of the Mesa Verde High School Safety Pathway Program, which is a program that perhaps in a future council meeting, our police chief or Commander Russo can bring an update to the public on the success of that program, which is basically a pathway, an elective pathway for high school students who want to go to law enforcement. And last year was our first year. We had 10 students graduate from it. This year, there are 20. And it's held at Mesa Verde High School, and we are bringing some of them in as interns, and a couple of them, it looks like they're going to be getting a job with our police department. So all good stuff. Okay. That is all I have, and so I think that wraps it up for council comments, and we'll go on to the next item, please.
The next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. And any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted time.
Good job, Amy. Okay. We have three speaker sheets, but one is for item eight, so we'll hold it till we call that item. So two from the general public, and the first one will be David Warren.
Good evening. It's been a quiet couple of weeks for me. The two of my neighbors were held up at gunpoint early in the morning, and it was an exciting experience. But I'd like to talk to you tonight about the homeless in our community. Every day when I look at—every time the Sentinel comes out, the issue seems to be the homeless in our community. When you go to the stores, it seems to be the constant complaint about the homeless in our community. And yet, the city has done very little to deal with the housing crisis associated with the homeless in our community. The—in the recent budget, and what will be coming up next year in the state legislature, is a significant increase in funding for local governments to provide homeless housing. There was $50 million this year. There'll be $100 million next year. That money can be used in our community if we decide to get a head start on it. The city has possessed, for a significant period of time, developed lots in Cianara. They all have site improvements in them already. They're ready to go. We don't have—the only investment we have to make is to put used FEMA trailers on the lots, which are easily available, and which can be funded through what will be next year's funding through the state legislature for homeless housing. We can put three to four of those FEMA trailers on each lot. We can put a five-year sunset in, so that doesn't—if it doesn't work out, we know when it's going to end. It will reduce the homeless on our street. We should design the program so it is for people only with children who are from kindergarten to the seventh grade. This will reduce the type of people that'll be there, associated with substance abuse, mental health issues, because these are the kind of people that want some stability in their lives. We can have the Salvation Army operate it through that same funding, which is being introduced in the state legislature and is being adopted in the city and county of Sacramento and in Los Angeles right now. And if there's any truth to the comments, the Trump administration sent people out from Washington, D.C., who toured Los Angeles today and yesterday, and will be sending national funding to provide for the homeless in the state of California. The problem with our navigator in this community is, there's no place to send the people that we meet on the street. The housing for the mentally ill and those individuals who are homeless, people who are living in automobiles with children, just simply don't exist. Even though we have housing which costs less in our community, let's say in Sacramento, it's still far beyond that for those people who are living in automobiles. The—excuse me. If we place these FEMA trailers on those Cianara lots, we will then move the people who are living in cars off our streets. There is no reason for us to continue the cycle of not having a place to send people in our community. Now, in addition, Mayor Bruins commented on the Secog limit meeting, where there was a discussion about low-income housing being required for new construction. Well, you should see the legislation that's coming next year. That is going to increase the percentage of low-income housing dramatically. Any new construction is going to have to be high-density housing in order to meet the low-income housing requirement. This community should get ahead of that by providing at least a start in getting the people into low-cost housing to compensate for other developments. I recognize that we're pretty well-built out, but we have two large parcels of property that can still be built out, and I don't want the city to get caught up in a problem, especially at Sylvan Corners. I don't want to see a four-story apartment building that goes from the corner to the cemetery. That would be catastrophic for our community. There will be matching funds, and I request that the city direct its staff to now start a study to find out where the money can be, find out whether or not it is reasonable to place those units. We have a center on Cianara where we can staff a mental health worker, a Salvation Army, by example, administrator for the units, and a security staff already in existence. So our initial capital cost will be minimal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
So, Mr. Warren, I don't mean to disagree with you, but I do have to take issue with just a couple of things you said. You're right. We do have a navigator program, and personally, you know, I think our navigator's doing a great job. She housed 136 individuals last year. She could have housed more, but to me, it's not so much a homeless issue as it's a mental health issue. Yes, to get into any of these, you know, home situations where they can be housed, they either can't be on drugs, or they can't have all the mental issues that some of them do have. Plus, they also got to want to help. Half the people our police department interacts with don't want the help. And, you know, you and I see them out there and, you know, feel sorry for them. They don't want the help. You can't make them take a home. So it's a catch-22. To me, yes, everybody calls it homeless. I think it's a bigger issue in terms of mental health. But when you talk about Cianara, yeah. The city owns several lots there. But there's also a big after-school program there of almost 100 people, you know, 100 kids that go there every single day. I'd be hesitant to go put a population of homeless there who have drug, alcohol, and mental health issues, just personally.
I concur with you. That's why the limitation was to individuals with children.
Fair enough.
Who are living in cars.
I guess I missed that.
With children. You're absolutely correct. The people that we see sitting out on the corner, camping at Rush Park, they would not be a good miss.
Okay.
But we have people living in cars who have children, who are single parents, who would then be able to place their children in a school, which they are unable to do now.
No, and I appreciate that clarification.
That would be the easiest to do.
If you said that, I missed it, so I apologize. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you. Our next item is—our next speaker is Tanya. Is someone named Tanya in the audience?
Oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't mean any disrespect to anyone here in the room.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
I don't mean any disrespect to anyone here in the room from anything I'm going to say, or the words I may use. I moved into this area a year ago to better my life. I'm on a five-year goal plan, and I haven't had the best experience. I do live off of Cianara. I live on Mingway. And I called the police for help that I need, I feel that I need, and I feel that I've had things done to me that shouldn't have, and I feel that my calls for service are ignored. I'm going to read a couple of things that I have dropped off to city council and the police department. One, to city hall here, which after dropping this off, I received a letter of no trespass to not come back for 180 days, or else I will be arrested. What I wrote, which was received by, I believe—I believe her name is Melanie, I'm not sure. But I wrote, "Whenever I call Citrus Heights Police Department, the dispatch refuses an officer—to dispatch an officer to me, no matter what my calls are for. I was told that Sergeant Evans was assigned to me, and that he is the only officer that can help me, no matter what I call for." I'm gonna read a couple of things that I have dropped off to city council and the police department. One to, to city hall here, which after dropping this off, I received a letter of no trespass to not come back for 180 days or else I will be arrested. What I wrote, which was received by, I believe, I believe her name is Melanie, I'm not sure. But I wrote, "Whenever I call Citrus Heights Police Department, the dispatch refuses an officer, to dispatch an officer to me no matter what my calls are for. I was told that Sergeant Evans was assigned to me and that he is the only officer that can help me no matter what I call for." And that sometimes I'm not, I don't have my calls answered, they're just cleared out. "I am afraid for my life and I feel unsafe in my own home. I feel harassed by Citrus Heights Police Department for asking for help. My situations are not taken seriously and rarely get resolved. I asked for an ambulance on December 10th, 2018 for mental health services and Sandy Dispatch refused to send me any type of service or officer and she repeatedly hung up in my face." I turned into the police department, that was December 10th, 2018. I turned into the police department January 23rd, 2019, to Citrus Heights Police Department. It was also received by, I believe her name is Tiffany Campbell. "Please do not allow Officer Taylor from the POP unit to have any further contact with me as of today, 1/23/2019. I have asked several times to not have contact with this officer, Officer Taylor, and Officer Turner. I do not feel safe around these officers and would like no contact by phone, in person, or any contact whatsoever with these two officers. Also, please ask dispatch not to transfer my calls to Sergeant Evans in the event of an emergency and Sergeant Evans is not available, dispatch refuses to send me an officer. I no longer want contact with Sergeant Evans due to Sergeant Evans not resolving my problems. My name, address, phone number." The day I turned this letter into the police department, I received three tickets on my vehicle in my driveway. I was a Lyft driver. I no longer work for Lyft because of these tickets. These were all given to me within a 24-hour period timeframe. One was given to me at 10:46 AM, one was given to me at 1, sorry, 5:12 PM, and one again the very next morning, a little after 12 o'clock, 1:15 AM. I was parked in my driveway, just like the other people who I have called the police out for, who have cleared my calls or transferred me to voicemail. I'm ticketed for the same things that I make calls for. I've also had a harassment charge filed against me that I'm currently going to court for, for contacting the police department for these things. Since 2018, I've actually, I mean, October 2018, I moved here August 2018. October 2018, I have had three charges altogether filed against me, two felonies and one misdemeanor. This is dated 7/24/2019 from the Water District. It says that I have observed evidence of irrigation water running from my property to roadside gutter or to abstract properties. And it says severe overwasting. I can only use my water for five minutes or else I will be cited. I contacted them, they said that somehow that's an error. I do not, I have longer than five minutes. But for some reason, this was what I was given. I have a lot of more stuff but that's just what I wanted to bring first. I will be here next week. I'm afraid, I don't know what else to do.
Well, thank you for coming this evening and I would like to refer you, we have several senior staff members from our police department here in the audience tonight and they are in the best position to address your situation and your concerns. And I would like to ask you to speak to one of them this evening for resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay. I have no other public comment cards, so with that, we'll go on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, and seven for council consideration.
Do we have a, with a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item.
Next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is 6916 Sunrise Boulevard, Easter's Catholic Bookstore and Gift. Request for Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity. The recommendation is, recommends approval of the Letter of Public Convenience and Necessity for the Type 20 alcohol license at 6916 Sunrise Boulevard.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudez here, representing the Planning Division on this item. As mentioned, this is a request for a letter of public convenience and necessity for Easter's Catholic Bookstore on Sunrise. And to remind you what we're reviewing tonight, public convenience and necessity is a required process that's issued through us through ABC. When ABC, excuse me, receives an application for alcohol license to a location that is in a census tract that is considered over-concentrated or has what ABC considers high crime, then they do refer that applicant requesting the alcohol license back to the local jurisdiction for review and approval. And the city's process is that it must come before you for consideration. So tonight, the public convenience and necessity request is from Easter's Bookstore and you are to review the application and make a decision and to remind you, this is an approval or denial process. It's not a conditional, like, there's no conditions we can put on it.
Okay.
So Easter's Catholic Bookstore is at 6916 Sunrise Boulevard. They relocated here to Citrus Heights in 2016 from further up Auburn Boulevard in Sacramento County where they operated for many years. And they do sell a variety of religious items, books, gifts, items like that. Their store hours are somewhat limited. They're open Wednesday through Friday from 10 to 5, Saturday from 10 to 4, and they close on Sundays and holy days. This is their location here at the southeast corner of Woodmore Oaks and Sunrise Boulevard. In that shopping center, there's a 7-Eleven, there's an auto parts store, and just to the north is the Copperwood Shopping Center. So the Type 20 alcohol license is ABC's designation for beer and wine license. And so, in theory, this sounds kinda weird, but they're, it's an off-sale liquor license. They're a retail store that will be selling alcohol basically to go. But in this particular case, what they're selling is altar wine and that is sold to churches and parishes, mostly Catholic. Some other denominations also purchase it. And they use it in their services, church services. So it's not a store where you would go buy any blessed wine or anything like that. The churches actually come here and purchase it. They do sell it, I think generally typically by the case, something they keep in their back room as a convenience for their service providers for the churches. It's not stocked on the sales floor, so when you walked in there, you would not, will not see a display of it. It's really just an overall, a small part of their overall sales as a convenience to the person in community. And they did sell it at their location when they were located in the county and then since the alcohol license couldn't transfer with them, they moved here and have opened and have been operating, so now they want to bring that item back to their product The police department and the Planning Division and other departments have reviewed the application and discussed it and we are recommending approval. Really is a specialized item. We don't feel it's bringing alcohol into an already over-concentrated or over-crime area since it's, is unique. Their sales at their other location in the county did not have any ABC-reported violations and they are pretty limited in hours and what they provide, as it will be only the altar wine. So we're recommending approval. Happy to answer any questions you have. Also, the store owner is here, should you have any operational questions?
Okay, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing unless council wants to make some comments. I'm gonna go ahead and open it. And I'm gonna invite Denise Kramer to come forward, please.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Denise Kramer. I am one of the owners of Easter's Catholic Books and Gifts and we appreciate any consideration that you might have for this. We do have a unique situation. Ours is a religious bookstore. It's not a restaurant, a bar, or a liquor store. So we have in the past, when we were on Auburn Boulevard in Sacramento, for 15 years, we provided liturgical wine for different parishes and even different denominations. It's a unique item and not found readily in the area, in the Sacramento area. So the move kind of stopped that, obviously. And it has impacted our business and it has caused us great concern with regards to keeping the store open because when churches would come in for the wine, they would also buy other needs, so it kept things flowing. I do have a few comments here. I know that some, there was some distress and some confrontation, I guess, maybe a couple of different stores nearby were concerned that we might be conflicting with their business. We sell only liturgical wine, which is a specialized wine and it has to be processed properly with no preservatives. We get it from, and it is guaranteed from a, from a specific winery. We buy only from one winery. It's Kribari. And according to the Catholic Church, it is required for our liturgical service, for us to use this particular type of wine, not necessarily the manufacturer, the winery, but the actual wine. So what we do, there was another complaint or a concern for our area that it would increase crime, increase homelessness, increase difficulties in the area. That's not what we're about. In fact, we also provide, we have a nonprofit. We have classes on a variety of subjects, everything from literature to philosophy. There are, in fact, I've got a class going on right now on literature. We do history and theology and so our store has many purposes and it's never been about dragging the community down. It's always been about lifting the community up. We are also there for several of those people that just come in wandering, not sure what they're looking for. We've placed a lot of people in ministry. That's what we do. So we do not sell to individuals, as it was stated. We sell only to parishes. On rare occasion, we have individuals come in for their parish, but we get, we would have them recognized as such. We do not sell at discount prices. It is a set price that the winery indicates. And as far as the cleanup of the area is concerned, because this is a difficult area, in fact, I will tell you that over the Labor Day weekend, I had a couple of our volunteers were out, because we work predominantly with volunteers. We don't have a paid staff, just one paid individual. They were out cleaning up some very difficult things on, in the parking lot, as I'm sure you're probably well-aware of. And we've sent pictures over, so I don't know whether you saw that or not. So ours is not, ours is not to bring anything down in the, in the community. We really work to lift up. And positive events to the area. We have had several events where, especially for, in the previous locations, we had music and family nights. So those are things that, that we've contributed in the area. Apparently, there are several beer and wine locations in our area. We would not be competing with them. No one, in fact, most of our customers have been surprised when we've had to put the signage up for the requirement for ABC. What do you mean, you're selling liquor? But we're not selling liquor. We're selling liturgical wine. So if, we hope to be able to continue this. It is a huge contribution, not a huge, but it is a good portion of our, our sales. It does help us. We have, our sales have declined drastically since we've moved to Citrus Heights and this is one of the reasons. In 2014, as compared to 2019, well, as compared to full year 2018, we are down about $90,000 and that is huge. We run with, with volunteers and so, it's a small family business. But we've provided for the community for 20, 20 years now, 21 years. So I respectfully request your consideration and your approval on this item. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
It's time for comments or we're closing?
Do we have any other people from the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for council comments or entertain a motion.
Well, I just have to say, when I was in eighth grade, me and a couple of their altar boys tasted this wine before it was blessed. And I've already done my penance for it, penance. But it tastes terrible. That's all I remember. But I think I'm gonna go to purgatory if I don't support this item, so I would like to move the item.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is designation of voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. So this year, the annual business meeting is taking place on Friday, October 18th at 12:30 PM during the league annual conference. And currently, Councilmember Daniels, Councilmember Middleton, and Councilmember Miller are registered to attend the conference, so we're asking council to select a voting delegate and up to two alternates to vote on the league resolutions during that meeting.
Well, our tradition is usually to send our newest council member to vote for us. It's a good experience. If there are no objections, what happened to Mr. Daniels? Oh, there he is. Okay, so.
I would. I'm fine, I'm not going, so it doesn't affect me, but I would just say, is one of them offering, volunteering to?
Yes, we've had, yes.
Okay.
We've, we have volunteered.
Already had that discussion.
Ms. Middleton to.
Everybody else took one step back.
Yeah, and then.
I can serve as alternate.
And how about you, Brett? Would you be second alternate?
Sure.
All right, we're, got it covered. We don't, do we have to vote on this?
Um, I don't believe so. We'll just direct staff and we will fill out the appropriate documentation.
Thank you.
This is actually what council required.
Does it say make a motion? Let me, let me read the item.
Oh, it does say make a motion.
Okay, so, all right, I will move that Portia be our representative with Steve and Brett behind her.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all for serving. I have a conflict that weekend or I would go too.
The next item is department reports, number 10. The subject is 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan update by the Community Development Department.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Bruins, Vice Mayor Slowly, council members. Stephanie Carter, Housing and Human Services Program Coordinator with the Community Development Department. As Councilmember Miller mentioned previously, the Quality of Life Committee meant yesterday to go over the 2020 allocations for CDBG funding in addition to program year 2020. We also have our five-year CDBG plan to update this year. That covers the period of 2020 to 2024. The five-year consolidated plan is also referred to as the CONE Plan and it is the long-term plan that guides the annual allocation process for the years that it encompasses. So the purpose of tonight is to give you a brief overview of the process, let you know where we are and what the next steps are, and to answer any questions and receive guidance prior to October when we'll come back and present you with the draft plan. The objective of the Community Development Block Grant Program is to develop viable urban communities and doing it through providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. The policies that guide the CDBG program include the consolidated plan, the long-range five-year plan, and then the analysis of impediments to fair housing, which we're also working on updating right now. And that combined with each year's annual action plan comes out to be the over, over-guiding policy and priorities for CDBG. The purpose of the CONE Plan specifically is to allocate the CDBG funds for the coming five-year period. It specifically allocates the funds for 2020 and then it provides a broad outline of the community priorities for the other years covered within the plan. In past years, the priorities have been to build healthy communities and expand economic opportunities and some of the goals have been to foster affordable housing, improve accessibility, and provide social services. Citizen participation is not only required by HUD but it's really crucial to the success of the program. On July 1st, we released the application for 2020 public service funds and on July 10th, we had an application workshop with potential nonprofits. On July 29th, we received all the proposals on the due date. We received eight proposals. And on September 11th, yesterday, we had the Quality of Life Committee meeting. Tonight is the department report. And on September 26th, we're gonna. And on September 26th, we're going to release the draft consolidated plan for public review and comment. And then on October 10th, we'll be back to present the draft plan to you. And on October 24th, we will bring back the final plan for your review. We've already held a community survey, a community workshop on August 28th at the Sayonara Center. We're having a collaborative feedback session tomorrow. We also have a survey that's targeted toward our stakeholders, like our nonprofit service providers and other local agencies. And we've been doing targeted phone calls and emails to make sure that we really capture all of the needs and priorities of our community. And then in October, we'll have the two required public hearings. So next steps, as I mentioned, tomorrow's a collaborative meeting. It is open to the public if anybody would like to attend. It starts at 9 o'clock in the morning, and it's in the large conference room, which is at City Hall across from council chambers. On the 26th, we'll release the draft plan, and then we'll have the two public hearings in October. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions, or if you want to provide any comments or feedback as we are developing this plan.
Anything from council at this time? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Stefan.
Thank you.
The next item is department report number 11. The subject is review and give direction on proposed resolutions to be presented at the 2019 League of California Cities Annual Conference, and will be presented by the city manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. The purpose of this item is for the council to briefly discuss and provide any direction to Councilmember Middleton as our voting delegate at the League of California Cities Conference in October. The first resolution is a request to the California Public Utilities Commission to amend Rule 28 to add projects in very high fire hazard severity zones to the list of eligible criteria, and to increase funding allocations for Rule 28 projects. So this is largely an issue that is pertinent to cities who have high fire risks, but this would be your opportunity to discuss with the council and provide any requested direction to Councilmember Middleton for the eventual vote.
Do we see any difficulty with this?
No, I mean, it doesn't, truthfully, it really doesn't have a lot of impact to us. I mean, it makes sense to recommend undergrounding, especially in high-fire hazard areas. And again, if the PUC is going to increase funding, it's kind of spread over everybody. So, no, I mean, to me, it makes sense to support it, but I'm one, I'm fine.
I'm good with it, too.
I'd be okay with it.
There you go.
All right.
All right. The second resolution is largely a Southern California issue. This resolution is calling on the federal and state governments to address the impacts of international trans-boundary pollution flows in Southern California. So that would be, so that would be rivers that flow from Mexico to the United States, the environmental impacts associated with that. Again, largely a Southern California priority, but now would be the time to provide any direction to Councilmember Middleton.
Boy, I'll tell you, I don't know much about that.
I don't know a lot about it. I mean, it makes sense. I'm not impacted unless I go down there, but one country shouldn't impact the other with their flow.
Well, we're calling on the federal, state government to address the impacts, and so I would support them addressing the impacts.
Yep.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next item is city manager items.
Yes, council, briefly. I just wanted to make an announcement regarding some staff promotions and some changes I wanted everybody to be aware of. So all kind of stemming from the retirement of our longtime Community Services Director, Rhonda Sherman. So with her retirement, the new positions are, the Director of Community Development is Colleen McDuffie, and behind her, moving up into her old position, is Casey Kempinare, is our Planning Manager. And Megan Huber, who is our, has been our Economic Development Manager, has now been elevated to Economic Development and Communications Manager, and will oversee our new communications and public outreach and engagement program that we have planned. And really finally, kind of rounding out that series of promotions, is Haley Reed, who has been made an Analyst One, and will come into the Economic Development Office with Megan Huber. So I just wanted to make those announcements and congratulate those four professionals for their hard work and well-earned and well-deserved promotions.
And I think we all echo your comments, Chris. It was a tearful goodbye to Rhonda Sherman, for those of us, you know, who have known her for so many years, but well-deserved retirement. I think we retired her over a period of about 30 days before it was all done, but it did make room to provide promotions for really well-deserving employees. I think that's just the best of the best, and so looking forward to working with them in their new capacities. They're not new to us, they're not strangers at all, so congratulations to them and to you for making these important assignments. Anything else?
Yeah, the next is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
Anybody have anything they want to bring up? Brett?
First, I'd like to start by having that young man right there come up to the microphone and tell us why he's here.
Hello, my name is Fred Corfey. I'm with Troop 217. I am working on my communications and citizenship in the community merit badges, and for one of those requirements, I have to attend a public meeting. So this was the one today, so I just decided to come here today.
Well, welcome. Are you on your way to Eagle Scout?
Yes, I am.
We look forward to that announcement.
Thank you.
You did very well in communicating.
Thank you. Very nicely done, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, oh yeah. I've actually got quite a few things to go through. I'll try to get through them quickly, but I'm going to be a little long-winded.
These are for requests for things to be on the agenda, not for a...
I absolutely understand how we do this.
Okay, I just want to make sure this isn't a public stand to make some point.
Thank you, Mr. Slowly.
You're welcome.
So tonight, I'm going to speak about homelessness and some things I'd like to see us do going forward as a city.
Wait, this is not on the agenda, and it sounds like you're going with opinion here.
If you want to put homeless on the agenda, say that, but don't go into all the reasons why, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so I'll just move forward then with...
No, I'm just as interested in this issue as well.
But it has to be on the agenda.
To get it on the agenda, I have to have somebody else agree to move it forward.
Right, but you don't have to sit here and take 15 minutes to talk about it. That's not the point.
So there's a couple of things that I'd like to see us move forward with as a city. The first one involves the speaker earlier tonight in bringing up the point of considering transitional housing on city-owned property. I think we do have a good opportunity to do something in a positive way as a city, something that is something that is required of us, something that we should do. We have actually a pretty good opportunity to do that, a unique opportunity, in that we do own property that does not have anything on it at this time that is available. We obviously have a need for such housing. I'd like the council to move forward with considering the possibility, the feasibility of doing such a thing, working with FEMA to see if there are some trailers available. These properties have infrastructure already in place, can be easily converted to a more permanent type of infrastructure. I did speak to Assemblymember Cooley regarding funding, and he is moving forward. We're trying to find such a thing to see if we did want to move forward with placing that housing. The kind of housing that I'm talking about is temporary transitional housing. It would be for families. It would be temporary in the sense of moving families towards permanent housing, and it would have a max time period of how long the families could stay in the housing. So I want to be very, very clear that I'm not talking about any kind of permanent housing. I'm talking about temporary housing. A lot of times, there's families that can't put together first month's rent, last month's rent, deposits and things like that, just to get into a place. They may actually be working, but they just can't put those kind of funds together, and they may need some help in being able to do that in a period of time that maybe we can help with that. I think we can have a good, a positive impact on some of our homeless by doing such a thing. Next thing I'd like to talk about is the winter sanctuary that is coming up. The winter sanctuary is a program put on through churches, through our heart program in the city, is at the formation point of, again, as we come up into the wintertime period. If your church might want to participate in such a thing, and you might want to bring that to your pastor, you can reach them through Citrus Heights Heart, and it's H-A-R-T at gmail.com. They will have a meeting on September 26th at Holy Family Church, and again, that's an opportunity to do something in a very positive way to help out the homeless community during the winter program, excuse me, during the wintertime. The next thing I'd like to talk about is shopping carts. It was mentioned, I think, a little bit earlier. I've spent the last few weeks going through Auburn Boulevard and Greenback Lane on pretty much a daily basis and looking at empty shopping carts. I don't understand why we have that. When you go on our website, it basically says, "Did you know that shopping carts should not be removed from, excuse me, store parking lots, and that Citrus Heights is committed to keeping the streets and sidewalks clean and works with businesses to return shopping carts to their owners as soon as possible?" I don't know how that's true when I see the same shopping cart sitting in an area for a week.
Did you call them in?
So I saw a loaded shopping cart in front of Applebee's.
So, Madam Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but is the point to put this on the agenda? I mean, that's all this is, is items to go on?
These items, Brett, these items really belong, when you make your council comments earlier in the meeting, that's what, this is just for future agenda items. So do you have a future agenda?
I'll go to a future agenda item, another item than I have.
That's all I want.
We currently have a camping ordinance that prohibits camping, for the most part, instead, excuse me, except for certain times when it is allowed. That camping ordinance has been pretty much cut down quite a bit because of a decision, a court decision, and that's led us to this timeframe where we kind of, in my opinion, and I think a lot of people's opinions, we feel like we are just accepting the restrictions that we have, as opposed to looking at what we can do. So I would like us to take a look at our camping ordinance, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it does have quite a bit of language in it that allows us to do certain things, and take our camping ordinance and add to it a restriction of no camping within 100 feet of any residential areas, commercial areas, or waterways. Reason for that is obvious. There's a lot of negative issues that come out of people and doing homeless camping, for the most part. They have a very negative impact in residential areas. We've had numerous fires recently next to residents that we've just, by some stroke of luck, I think, nobody's getting killed or hurt in these things, and so...
So is your request to put that on the agenda, to revise that ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to suggest, or request of staff, is to take a look at, given the three areas he just mentioned, residential, commercial, and waterways, and take a look at what is left, and then report back to us.
Yeah, I'd actually recommend this is a topic for the retreat, because that's a lot of work. It's not just putting an item on the agenda.
That's true. Yeah, we have a retreat coming up. We'll take a look at it.
It's a lot of research, and that's the whole point.
I support that.
So at this point, I say, Brett, bring it up at the retreat under council comments, and we can have that discussion, but a dissertation here as opposed to trying to get it on the agenda, that's not where we're going, so.
And then the final thing I'd like to bring up is in regards to the same type of situation where our citizens are coming across encampments that are a danger to our public health and safety. Our kids are getting poked with needles, they're stepping in poop. All of this stuff is going on, and we're not doing enough about it. We're failing. And so I'd like to see another consideration for an ordinance that calls for the immediate removal of any encampment that's found to be a public safety hazard.
We'll discuss that also at the retreat.
And I totally agree. I think, you know, the discussion all night brought up first by Mr. Warren was about families in car, and I don't think our community has a single problem with just an outpouring of support for folks, and I know our navigator's been really successful, but it's such a small percentage of folks that are out there, and the problem our residents are really having is with the unsanitary conditions Brett mentioned and the criminal activity that we can...
So let's just remember what the purpose is here, to put something on the agenda, not to delve into it, because nothing's on the agenda.
And I'll communicate offline with what I'd like to see from the chief for our retreat in regard to statistics and so forth, and some data.
That'd be helpful.
All right, anything else? All right, Portia, anything from you? Steve?
I have my opinion.
Okay, I have nothing. Anything else, Madam Clerk? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.